Okay, all right, let's do that again. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. My name's Rick Alpers, and I think we might have met a couple of years ago, if not, some new faces, from Primex, the towns, lack of a better term, insurance company. And we're here. I have with me Shelley Waltz, who's your member services consultant, and your new risk management consultant, Nicole Armiganian, who just started with us a couple of weeks ago. So they're here. Shelley's gonna take the notes, and Nicole's here just to observe and make fun of me at the end of this. So it's all good. But we're pleased to be here tonight. It's, this is an important partnership, and we're always pleased to get out in front of boards, town councils like yourselves, and help you navigate the waters of the annual goal setting. We think it's important to goal set on a regular basis. Hopefully you agree. That's why you're here. That's why I'm here. It really helps towns, towns, what we find is they function well at the top. If they have annual goals, then it does trickle down through the organization. The organization overall performs better than it might have in previous years. And so what you have here is a great functioning community, a great town, good town administrator. So we're excited about tonight. We're excited to listen to you and figure out what your next year's goals look like, and where you want New Market to go, where do you want it to be. And so I'm gonna play the role as facilitator. You're gonna do all the fun, hard work, and sort of send me down a path together, and so I look forward to that. But before we, what I did was, there's an agenda in front of you, and that sort of spells out what we're gonna do tonight. And I don't think it's gonna take terribly long. I know it's an off-meeting week for you, and you probably have other stuff to do, which is important. But I just wanted to run down the agenda. We're doing the introductions and all the review now. You do have a packet in front of you of the 16 goals when I was here last with Shelley. And then we'll get right into after that, talking about individual goals as a counselor here in New Market, along with the administrator. And then we'll break for about five to seven minutes, and Shelley and I will take a look at the goals you've come together as a group, and figure out if we can find some common paths and common themes, and set three or four goals out of that, if you can all agree on that, to move forward. So the nice part is, I'm gonna ask you all tonight to, you know, share what you wanna see New Market achieve as a community over the next year. Really come up with like two or three goals. And so when you get that, we'll have, you know, we have five people around the table right now, and we'll have six in a little bit. Well, that's 18 goals. And that, that can be a little unwieldy, especially for Steve to navigate that, to accomplish 18 large goals over the next year. Almost impossible. So what we like to do is, we take that break, and we'll look at those 18 goals, and start to find some common themes and common ground. And Shelley and I will come up with about three or four goals that hopefully you would agree upon over the next year. We'll put some timelines around it, some dates around it. And, you know, those goals might have some objectives in there, and some further detail. Does that make sense? Is that okay? I try not to make it an arduous process. You know, there are goal-setting processes out there where you can just, you know, you can explode on paper. But what happens is, it becomes overwhelming, because there's so much paper, and there's so many goals. But what we really wanna do is just focus you over the next year. So, you know, other communities that do strategic plans, that's great. Those look three, five, seven years old. But what we're looking for tonight is really, you know, what's the next 12 months look like? What's even, you can stretch it into the 18-month mark, but what's the next 12 months look like for you as a council, with the administrator, with department heads? What's it look like as a community? Okay? Is that okay? All right, good. So you can, if you turn to page six of the report, real quick, we can review what the council agreed on in 2016, in 2016 for 2017 goals. And, you know, that, the council has changed, and that's okay, but it just gives you some, lays a little bit of foundation of what was said in the past. And so goal number one was to unify townwide CIP, to build a process, and to deliver to council by 2017, October 2017, and the administrator is responsible for the task. And so when Steve and I talked tonight, do you wanna weigh on that at all, Steve? That's sort of, that's happened?
Yeah, we do. We have unified CIP now with schools, and always working on the process to improve it, but it's more, it's better than it was in 2016, much better. So.
Yeah. And I would commend you, because I think a lot of communities try and do that, and they never get there. So congratulations. It's not easy to combine CIPs with, you know, a whole other governmental entity, even though it's within your town. It's hard sometimes for folks to come together and share that information. So goal number two, increase parking in the downtown, right? Either through public or private solutions.
We are working with NCDC to try to address it, and we know the, and New Market Business Association has formed a committee to try to look at it. But like, we've had, is, land is scarce for us, so.
Is the study, when it says, I know you said, was it, you gave the NBA a study to look at?
Yep.
That was the old study?
That was the old one.
So there's no big consensus on new study?
No. And that was when, you know, I emailed the representative from the NBA last week after our meeting, just to sort of try to light a fire. I still haven't heard anything back from the last one. So, but we, I've talked recently with the New Market Community Development Corporation about some options. We're being televised, I can't get into it, because it'd involve real estate deals, but we're looking at some items.
Well, the other thing, just seems like that it's related to that, is there was a decision to, sort of outside of a deeper planning process, but the decision was made, I think, in the last year, to, for example, renovate the Bay Road parking lot. We have parking out there. So you're leasing some parking for off-street, for, so that various tenants that lack other parking can lease it.
Yeah, too, we increased it there. Beach Street, we're doing it there now, and we changed the rules for the library, behind the library parking lot. Before, you had to be out at certain hours. Now, if you have a permit, you can park all night, so people can have more permanent parking, until we can find a better solution. Great. Sounds like you're making some headway.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just gonna, this is only tangentially related. But are, are we going to, or why haven't we paved the Bay Road lot? What happened?
It came too late in the season last year, because of...
Sorry?
Yeah. When the governor released all those extra funds, all the paving companies got tied up. So we weren't able to get to Bay Road before, the parking lot before the end of the season, so they're gonna do it this spring.
Okay. Because we had the funds.
Yeah, yep. It was New Market. Yep.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. This is good. One thing I didn't mention is that this allows, you know, feel free to push back, and be open, and talk freely. This is, this is your time. This is not my time. And so ask the questions, and we can have a good conversation about it.
Yeah. So, and I, and I noticed, too, on one of the police rights, that they, it does look like parking tickets are up, because one of the, one of the parts to it was to discourage long-term parking during the day, right on Main Street. And is that where a lot of the tickets are going from people that are overparking?
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, nighttime, this time of year, it's up also because of the winter parking ban. So, but yeah, they're, they're doing it downtown. I've noticed it a few times, driving through in the morning, there'll be some tickets on vehicles, so.
But we're offsetting that with some of the reserved spots, right? Or the sticker?
Yes, yes. If somebody needs one, they can park in some of the off-street parking overnight. But if they leave a car on the street overnight, they're gonna get ticketed.
Yep.
Good. Okay. And goal number three, continue relations with the school board and SAU staff for further efficiencies, and solidify the counter-agreement with the shared financing facilities positions. And that's been completed, right?
Yeah. It's going well.
Yeah. I'm not trying to blow smoke, but again, that's an example statewide. That is a monumental task. That shouldn't go unnoticed. And would you agree, Steve?
Yeah, oh yeah. I've had people ask me how we do it. We spoke at the NHMA conference, and, you know, we're looking at other positions, too, as well. So.
I wouldn't say it was completed. I'd say it's a process.
It's a process.
Yeah. But it's, you know, it, as I said, it's very rare in any community in the state that the superintendent of schools comes to town staff meetings and sits in as a, you know, with all the departments to discuss issues. Because we all know we have the same issues, so.
Mm-hmm. Good for you. Every once in a while, you should take a pat on the back, and that's probably one you should take a pat on the back on, because not easy to do.
Yeah, and I, I think it's worth pointing out that there have been a couple of challenges in the last year, that we're, we weren't, if we didn't have better, you know, I think, administrator and the superintendent work well together, the school board, the town council are pretty, you know, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of antagonism anywhere we found right now, which is to be celebrated.
Right.
And, and so when you have, have something comes up where, you know, along the lines of talking about the school town, that we went from a point where there was a healthy debate about whether we needed a facilities person, to the point where, when it looked like the school was gonna need a lot more of its time, and we were trying to figure out how to do that, it was clear that on the, on the town side, you know, that position was considered too valuable, just to sort of let it go away for a while. So I think there's been a lot of change since the time we did these goals, but they've been primarily successful.
Good. Congrats. And lastly, one that Steve and I were trying to come to, you know, an update on, but, and it's okay, the goal number four, meet the, with the, meet with planning board to work together to align the goals for 2017, based off summaries of the consultants and the Stratford Regional Planning Commission reports. So I think you had different consultant reports, and then Stratford Regional Planning Commission had done some work for you, and trying to bring those together. How are you?
Good.
Good. Well.
Yeah. Actually, last night at the planning board meeting, they were asking when we're gonna meet again. So.
We're trying to get a date.
Yeah.
Have you talked to Diane yet?
Yeah.
Are we still looking early June? I thought that?
I hope so, yeah.
Great. So that's where you left off, in the 2016, 2017, sort of, those years there. And now we're looking towards, you know, what does 18 look like, and what does the beginning of 19 start to look like at this point, right? So we're in April of 18, and moving right into the 2019 year. What I want you to do at this point, and it's tough to do, and it's, you know, it's after work, a lot of you, most of you have already worked all day, but start to sort of, you know, get the juices flowing, start to get that mind a little bit open, where we're thinking a little bit outside the box. You know what? Everything is possible in these types of sessions, and I think your colleagues will tell you if it's truly realistic or not. That's not my job. It's, you'll have some, you know, nice debate over whether or not something is possible. But really start to think about, you know, what do you want to accomplish over the next year as a council together? What do you want to accomplish in the community? And where do you wanna go? And I know I said that already here tonight, but it's so important. You know, that's where the vision, as you start to push, what do you want to exceed? And so, and the nice part is, at the end, you're only gonna have three or four or five goals, and that becomes manageable for Steve, and the staff, and yourselves to accomplish. And so, you know, start to think about that, and just do your best to sort of, you know, I know it's easier said than done, but really open up the minds as sort of as wide as you can. And to start that process, and, you know, I think if you look at the report that we did in 16, we talked about, you know, what's going well in New Market, and we talked about what's not going well. A little bit different than that. What I want you to think about is, what's one of the most exciting prospects on the horizon for New Market right now? What's one of the most exciting prospects on the horizon for New Market right now? You know, what's, what's one thing that stands out that you think you should, the community should jump out and grab? What's going on? What's exciting? Go ahead. You can just start throwing them out.
I noticed in the last year or two, that New Market's reputation has really risen in the whole Seacoast, as a, you know, a great place to be, from a lot of perspectives. So there's recognition now. Probably stuff that we already knew about, but.
That's true.
And, and a follow-on to that is, you know, people have mentioned that they come here on purpose, you know, to be in New Market. Not to live here, but to visit, and, you know, day, day trippers.
Yep.
Let's say.
Yes, we are getting tourists.
Yeah. And I think, that's all right. And I think along those lines, I think, you know, we've, we are also have such great trails, and outdoor activities, and we have the kayaks down at the waterfront now, that you can rent. And we have wonderful restaurants and shops now, too, that help as well, that people wanna come see.
We're finally addressing the school issue. Between 16 and 17, that was done. We're addressing the, the school issue, that the high school and elementary school facilities are both being renovated.
Correct. That passed, which was exciting to see.
Right. I think that, that happened after our last goal setting, so, yeah.
It did. Yeah. You were moving right into that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just gonna put school district, facility, bond, or bond passed. Okay?
So I think that we're really poised to embrace energy efficiency in our community, and, and also alternatives, energy alternatives.
In what sense of energy efficiency?
So, like solar, and, and just looking at different, and our facilities in general, like looking at buttoning up some of our facilities.
Okay.
With our facilities director. So we have, we're sort of on the cusp of everything.
Great.
I feel like we're getting started with that. We have a new committee that's starting to look at energy efficiency.
Perfect.
I think another item that we have for potential plus is that our downtown's been successful. That means now that, I think, our two gateways are the next areas to develop, North Main Street and Exeter Road. We have to focus on the two gateways, try to develop those, so people, you know, continue the development out.
Expand development outside the downtown.
Yeah. Mine, I was actually thinking the same thing. Gateway development.
I like that, gateway development. Yeah. What else? What else is exciting that's on the horizon here for, for New Market?
I mean, houses don't stay on the market for very long. When they become available, people swoop right in. They're willing to pay more than asking price, which tells us that there is something about our town that people are really attracted to. While you do have the day trippers, you also have people who are looking to make a long-term commitment to the community.
Yeah. They wanna, they want, desire to live here. And the schools might play an impact in that, too, you know? Good. Okay? What else?
I think our recreation department, I mean, I know someone, we mentioned outdoor recreation opportunities, but our recreation department, the town department is pretty amazing, and, you know, just got, like, working on this grant for a splash pad, and like, really expanding our opportunities for all ages. So not just for kids, but also for seniors, and kind of everyone in between.
Yeah. They're kind of a, they're a great example statewide for rec departments. I'll, I'll be open with that. I mean, Amy and before that, Jim, they've won a lot of awards over the years, and it's pretty neat to see.
Yeah.
Speaking of awards, and, you know, sort of related, we have, you know, it's just last summer, this new sewer plant, redone sewer plant right on the line, which ties back into, you know, Amy mentioned some of the outdoor recreation. You know, we dropped our nitrogen contribution to the bay about 90 percent. A lot of efforts are out there to try to restore the oyster population and stuff like that. But Great Bay is a tremendous asset, and it's nice that, you know, we are, I think, are somebody that's doing our share.
Yep.
I think another thing to go along with that is that our utilities issues have been addressed. We have a new wastewater treatment facility. We have enough water, which we didn't have in the past. It was interesting, I was telling, talking to somebody about the story, but somebody knows, when they were trying to come to New Market at one point, the issue was, we didn't have enough water. And so we have been updating our utilities, so we can handle development, you know? And we continue to invest in the utilities, so.
Has anything more happened? I've got, I've got something on, as an extension of that brownwater committee I was on, I was invited for some program that's coming up in a couple of weeks. Has anything further happened?
They're still working with engineers to, that's gonna be, that's not a, that's gonna be a little bit.
That's gonna be a little bit.
Yeah, it's.
But the, I just.
We're still work, they're still working on it. Yeah.
The process is still a bit nonstop.
No, no, no. They're hiring an engineer firm.
Because I was gonna mention it, and if it had stopped and died, now it's just out of the limelight.
Nope. Oh, no. It's actively going. Yep.
Anything else for that? Not to go negative on you, but what, what, because you always, always need a little bit of realism, but what still needs a little bit of work? What still, this is just to get the juices flowing as we move into goal-setting in the next part. What still needs a little bit of attention?
Everything needs attention.
Yeah.
That's the problem. Continue to keep attention.
That's right.
Yeah.
I mean, parking is a real problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I think. I agree.
And that's specifically in the downtown?
Yes. And I think it hinders our, you know, businesses.
Yeah.
Wanting to move town.
Okay. Yeah, it's full up there. I mean, as far as you drive through town, it's, it's a good thing. You're busy.
And some of it's perception. So it's not, it's not 100 percent reality, I think. Sometimes it's perception, too. And for us, parking isn't necessarily, I don't think, about creating new spaces, but maybe directing people to existing spaces that they have. And so, you know, we need to work on that.
Okay. Good. What else?
Our roads and facilities need improvement.
Okay.
We're improving the schools, but our other buildings are starting to show their age, even though they were built in 30, 20, 30 years ago.
Because they still need attention. Yeah, right?
Right.
Always.
Yeah.
Okay. What else?
A lot of firms.
Right.
Yes.
They're important, especially come December, January.
I think the, there is an issue that housing is becoming unaffordable in New Market.
I have heard several times that folks feel priced out, being able to live here.
But that's not just New Market.
No, 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 no.
That's not just New Market.
It's the whole region.
But for a while, New Market wasn't one of those communities. It was.
That's right.
But now we are. Yeah. And it's, and I'm not saying that, it's, it's not because of taxes either, it's because of just the value of the home.
The value of the homes.
Right.
Because as quick as they go on the market, they.
They're gone.
They're gone.
Yeah, they're gone.
And that's really, and you're saying that's not only New Market, but it's the Seacoast region?
Yeah. But for a while, we were sort of isolated over here, but.
If you school.
I think the school.
The successes we've had actually did it, so. I mean, the perfect example was, it was a housing development that was supposed to be starting homes, started homes at $250,000, and they're all in the market for $400. So, rocky and green.
Oh, no, it's supposed to be $200.
$250, three, yeah.
Yep.
In the housing area, too, I would say, it seems like we have a lopsided ratio of owned versus rentals.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
So not enough rentals?
No.
No, two men, okay.
We're majority rental.
You are? Okay.
We're one of the few.
But in that line, I think, most of the new units that have come on have been, you know, if you look at the situation we were in on our first joint conference, it was really concerning. Compared to surrounding communities, we had lots of affordable housing, but it was a challenge for our tax rate.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we didn't have the proportion of single fam, we were the, we had the highest proportion of multifamily housing on the Seacoast. We still may for all I know, but.
That's the subtext, obviously.
Yeah.
So it's all, you know, it's right. It's all how you look at that. But that, that does create a, if you don't have a lot of industry, you don't have a lot of other help to the tax rate. And then on top of that, then it, and you're trying to, to run a fairly small school, which can be more expensive for people. All of those things make it really tough to, to have a tax rate that people consider livable.
Makes it a little perfect storm. So, what else? What else needs a little bit of attention?
If I may, I would say that we have some pedestrian-based issues, especially walking in the downtown environment. It's great that we have a lot of folks that are patronizing those businesses, but some of my constituents feel that they're, they're just gonna get hit crossing the road. They don't feel that sense of safety. We've addressed that to a point by having the flashing lights and those more, the tactile crosswalks, which is great, but I still think that having Main Street as kind of our main thoroughfare in and out of town is producing some issues.
Okay.
And then if you look at stuff over by Chester's, the gas station area over there, our sidewalks are in pretty bad disrepair, and it makes it an unwelcoming environment for folks who may wanna walk up and down our roads.
Just, just letting you know, those sidewalks are being repaired when those, the want-to-wait project is done. Yeah.
That I knew.
Yeah, okay.
Being an example.
Yeah.
It's all good. Sure.
So, sort of related to that, or tangential, is because of the way things have changed on the, on this part of the bay, the growth, our downtown has become a commuter path.
Yeah.
Versus, you know, a destination.
Yeah.
Or it's challenged to be a destination versus just passing through. And a lot of congestion because of that at certain times of day. And that goes to, I think, the safety people feel is bad.
Yeah. Well, when you have more vehicles there, just whether or not they are moving as quickly as people perceive them to be, there's, you know, there's more possibility for incident.
They're impatient to get home, or somewhere they're going.
We did, we did.
Trying to make a left-hand turn down there.
It's down to 25.
Take a cross traffic.
And we also notice, we have a ways effect in New Market.
Really?
Yes. If, summertime, if the spalling turnpike backs up, we'll have, ways will send them here.
If summertime, if the Spalding Turnpike backs up, we'll have, ways will send them here. So we'll start seeing backups, and we know, and we know when it's gonna happen now. And we see it, I can tell you.
Could make that pause.
To drive from Dover, we see, you can see it the whole way, that if, at certain times of the day, certain times of year.
You can see it.
Newmarket will get backed up because of ways, the app that sends them other ways.
Huh. Twenty-first century problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
We haven't, yeah, Greenland has the same thing on thirty-three.
Yeah.
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 Because that's the route, the one down one oh eight and up thirty-three.
Right, you'll skip past the Spald, the Spalding Turnpike and General Sullivan Bridge, so, because two thirty-six in Maine is already backed up, so it's now sending them on this side to go up that way.
No kidding? Isn't it interesting?
You think there's a way that we could work with the company to maybe address that, or?
It's, it's crowdsourcing.
Yeah.
What they're doing is they're saying, okay, this crap, because every, I think it's, every Android phone is, has it, so now the Spalding's backed up, now two thirty-six backed up, and they'll just automatically kick to the next road and, yeah.
I mean, it's a route.
Well, right.
Some of the residential areas near Boston would really complain, but this is Route one oh eight, so it's a tight.
The state route, yeah.
Right.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. What else? So we're just, sorry, Casey, we're just talking about, we said, the first two pages up here on the wall, my handwriting is very messy, so I apologize for that, but we talked about, you know, things that, an exciting prospect on the horizon for Newmarket, like things that are going really well right now at the moment, and now we're just heading down the path a little bit of, you know, what still needs a little bit of attention, what still needs a little bit of work in the community. And this is just sort of to get the, the juices flowing as we head into what the, everyone, every counselor and administrator's top two to three goals are for the next year. Okay? Anything else on the list?
Yeah, I think it, we, I mean, it was mentioned that there's been some more housing in there, but we haven't really seen a lot of commercial development. In a way, that's, that's good, but in a way, as we continue to build, to buy more furnaces, continue to do things, you know, it, it would be good to have things that will help our tax rate and this, you know, it, you don't have, we've learned through consultants that you don't want to have unreasonable expectation that you're going to bring in some, something, some, some commercial enterprise that's gonna greatly impact our tax rate. But at the same time, I think we want to move, we've been trying to move our, some of the properties that the town is, is taking possession of, moving back to taxpaying properties, things that will, you know, bringing in the, use this, this chance where, where, you know, Newmarket is more highly thought of, to try to attract the kind of businesses that would be really desirable, be a good fit with our community, helps with our, with our tax rate and our moving fund.
Good. Okay. What else?
I would say our tax rate. So, I mean, I think that we are doing a great job, and we're certainly in line with neighboring communities, lower than a lot of neighboring communities, but it's something that we always have to be thinking about, so I've, not to say that it's a negative, but it's just something that we always have to keep in mind. And balancing all these things, you know, the facilities, the furnaces that we have to buy, with, and the needs of the town with, you know, the realities.
Yeah. It's not easy.
Mm-mm.
It's not, it's hot, you need to keep it, yeah. Yeah. And I would say, this is probably at the top of the list of virtually every community in the state, whether you're Pittsburgh, New Hampshire, or Newmarket, you know, this, this, you know, how do you balance that? How do you, and then deliver the services that your, your residents and your citizens expect? Good.
I think we have a lot of open space, but we don't have a lot of parks.
True.
Like, most of our parks are all within, not even a quarter mile from this building, and there's nothing for the outer areas that maybe only have, like, dog parks or the other neighborhood parks that some people don't have to come all the way into town.
And deal with parking.
Right, well, no, yeah. But we, we just don't have, we don't have parks. We have open space, but not parks.
And even downtown, there's not a lot, there's no green space.
Right.
Right.
You know, there's.
We don't have a public comment. Shand is the closest park that's the closest we have to that.
Okay, good. You know, those things, it's interesting, as you start to read through, when you talk about good rec department and good outdoor recreation and in need of future parks, and you're building a new school or renovating the schools that you have, that plays a huge role in attracting people to come live in your community, which is, that's, that's some of the answer there, that as houses come on the market, they disappear within minutes. Those are the reasons why. You're a very attractive community. We talked about the state, Newmarket is a, is a great place to be and live, so. Some good stuff there.
One of the things, you know, Zachary mentioned, the pedestrian downtown, but I also think walkability in general, and we are still a rural, a fairly rural community, aside from that one oh eight, you know, corridor, and having routes, you know, we, we don't necessarily want to build more sidewalks because that's expensive and then.
Gotta maintain them.
Yeah, and then you have to maintain them. I mean, here and there we do, but as a general rule, I don't know that that's what we want.
Yeah.
But finding ways to connect and to make it a, either walk, more walkable or ridable community, I think is important as we move forward and try to attract young people.
Yeah.
To Newmarket and to stay in Newmarket, as well as older.
Which would also assist with.
The fifty-five, you know, community.
Yeah.
Who can afford the houses and that. Rock and, of course.
Would you also consider public transit as a part of that as well?
I think it's a separate.
Okay.
Issue.
I'm just curious, since we're just getting around the city, but.
That's tough because of ridership.
Right.
They really aren't sustained.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the whole, the whole area.
Another thing that's related to that, and that's pretty much, is there's two things that I'll, I'll just touch on briefly. One is, I think we haven't mentioned yet that, you know, to the extent we have more growth, we're already seeing pretty tough traffic in the, in our commuting time, that it's, one oh eight's only two lanes, and it's no growth to the capacity to handle traffic. It's getting pretty filled in, it's not be stopped until two of them. And it's different, we're talking about the same areas, is that it was kind of, I mean, I think we, we won in court, and if we did the right thing when we, we said, this is silly trying to, for us to try to manage the engineering on Route one oh eight south of town for bike, to create bike lanes, that wasn't the right way to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And you see what better bike, you know, what one oh eight needs to be, just looking north of town up through Beryl. And I think we, we have to kind of keep it on our, our radar, because that's really an issue of, of keeping the issue above of the state, because I think the two are related. One oh eight is, is getting overcapacity and it's gonna get worse, and it's, it's a totally inadequate. Biking is incredibly popular around here.
Yeah.
Totally inadequate, both of that.
Working, says working with the state. We didn't work with them last time, they sued us, but.
But they, but they were here for their ten years.
Yeah.
It was really striking, there was Bunker Hill Road and Stradivarius.
Yes.
Here, I mean, they were full force out there, and they had been doing it for several of those meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Showing up and advocating, they wanted, just to get a light there.
That's been going on for ten years for Bunker Hill.
Right, and I think we have to start to think about how do we create awareness with the state that there's, we, you know, you've got a greatly improved road down to Newmarket, and then it's not improved at all down to, or substantially down to the Stradivarius.
Yeah, we have many more accidents that side of downtown.
That side?
Yeah, south, south.
Okay.
Versus north.
I'm a North Country guy, so don't hold that against me. So I'm trying to catch my.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Around now, you're like, that's south, that's north. Yeah. Good. What else, before we move on to? This is good, this is. Starting to see a pattern, so I think the goals are gonna be fairly easy overall as we move into it.
Is this, what are we on? Are there things that continue to?
Yeah, continue to need a work and attention.
I think we're, we're nearing the end of decisions, but I'll put it out there, the McAllen Dam has been, that's been long for us.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, you know, I'm optimistic that we're gonna reach a good conclusion on that, but we're not there yet.
The McAllen Dam?
McAllen.
McAllen.
Yeah, M-A-C-A-L-L-E-N. We own that dam in the middle of downtown, in the mills.
Oh, okay.
When we, so, when the mills were sold to Newmarket Community Development Corporations, the dam was part of it. They didn't sell the dam as part of it the second time, so we, the town owns the dam.
And so you maintain it?
We have to maintain it, and we have to do some significant fixes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know where this goes, but it's loosely connected with the dam. Waterfront in general, Shandah Park, a lot of erosion problems, so I'm just kind of, I don't know if those would be somewhat linked together, if they were separate, but the waterfront will certainly need some repairs in the near future.
Mm-hmm.
So, just, erosions, and, and for planning for the future with climate change and everything, I think that's going to be significant.
Yeah.
So, we might be able to save a little bit more if we attack it early versus waiting till it all washes away.
Okay. So it disappears on you?
Yeah.
Well, the water front's such a big asset, too.
Yeah.
If you look at it from that perspective as well.
Along those lines, I don't know if it fits in here, but I had a conversation, I bumped into Val and she was saying, and I think it came back, I don't know, she was saying that some people have, have this noodle to the idea of trying to see whether there was a way of, and, and maybe you know something about this, that I talked about, about, some people have had the idea of trying to, you know, extend Shandah Park along the waterfront by putting, you know, a kind of a waterfront walk.
A river, a river walk?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think some of it's right-of-way issues.
Right.
Because it's privately owned and trying to get that corrected would be the issue. But, no, I know they want to. That, that's the ultimate goal, would you have a, a river walk?
Who's sort of leading that charge?
I don't know if it has been in a number of years, after they, they ran a significant, literal now gates, of trying to get through there.
Especially, you know, especially if we are able to, you know, create a small park up by the dam.
Yeah.
It would be really a tremendous improvement if that were to happen.
Sure. So now, I think at this point, we have, you know, quite a bit on paper. We've, we've talked about, you know, what's exciting on the horizon here in Newmarket. We've spent a little time now talking about, you know, what might still need a little bit of attention, a little bit of work, and that, and that's the case in every community. I mean, there's always something that needs to be tended to. You said it when I, when my, my opening statement, when we moved on to what still needs work. There's always something. But what I, well, I want to give you a couple of minutes of time. There's some notepads in front of you, you have your own notebooks. Just want you to, give you about five to seven minutes, and you might already have them formulating in your, in your, your head at this point, but think about, after, you know, and they might mirror some of what we have up here, and they, but they might be totally different what we've talked about here tonight, and that's okay, but what, do you want to see the council, the administrator, department heads, you, the community, what do you want to see accomplished over the next year? Maybe eighteen months out, so twelve to eighteen months, something that's, you know, reasonable. If you put up there that we're gonna pave every road in the community over the next eighteen months, well, I'll probably be the first to tell you that's not gonna happen. And so, but that's okay, but, so think about what you want to accomplish. You know, where do you want to go? Who do you want to be? What do you want to get done over the next twelve to eighteen months? And I'll give you a couple minutes just to, to write those down, two to three goals a person, and we'll get them up, up on paper and start talking about them. Okay?
I'm assuming that it's normal that some of these might roll over or be continuations from last year?
Correct. Yep, if, yeah, from the last reports.
All right.
And that's perfectly reasonable. Yeah. Yeah. I will.
It's funny that you mentioned rural. When we do an emergency management planning, we realize we have no farms.
Really? No, what?
Because they said farms in town.
You don't have one?
Nope. No place where there's, like, livestock, because that's one of the things we have to worry about.
Not even New Roots?
What?
Not even New Roots? Not on Doe?
Does it have, is it?
They got livestock.
They got chickens, they got.
Yeah, they're a full-on farm.
Where is it up here?
Oh, Grant Road, maybe Turnon Doe Farm, I think, Road, or something like that, like at the end of that housing development.
Is that still Newmarket? Is that New?
They say they're Newmarket.
They say that they're Newmarket.
It's part of our conservation land, so we, we.
It could be part, but it's a park.
I think it's all, I think it's all Newmarket.
Yeah, we're trying to figure.
They're the ones that were in the farm stand near the coffee drive-through thing until this past year.
They, they have cat, I mean, they, like cattle? I mean, chickens.
They got animals.
No, but. When you emergency measure play, cows are different than chickens.
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I only remember chickens, seeing chickens up there.
Maybe not.
Everyone just got ready?
Yeah.
I'll have it, okay. Who wants to go first? Steve, you want to lead the way?
Sure. I think, I thought, I'm gonna steal one for her, because we have the same one. I think gate, we need to address gateway development. With the Route one oh eight project on North Main Street wrapping up soon, there's gonna be a large parcel of empty land, even though the town doesn't own it, but we're also, we put a mil, a lot of money into the infrastructure up there to allow development in that area. So I think we need to start looking at development, North Main Street, as well as South one oh eight or Exeter Road. I mean, we have a vacancy where McDonald's is now, but we also have a lot of empty parcels there that could be used.
Okay. Just want to make sure I captured that, so both ends of the downtown, one, South one oh eight, and then Exeter Road, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. What else do you have?
We need a facilities rehabilitation plan for us. We've put up our facilities waiting for the school.
Yep.
Now we need to address ours. We have roof problems, as you said, furnace problems. This building's got heating issues to go to the energy efficiency as well. And I put also infill development. We've got places in town that may, and I know it's difficult because we look for parking, but sometimes what may be a parking lot may be better used as something else and put parking some in a different area. Either turn it into green space or try to incentivize new buildings in town.
So you said empty pockets?
Right.
Essentially.
Right. Fill them in, you know, try to get new development in those areas.
Yep. I'm going to, I'll find a different name for it, but I'm going to call it Empty Pocket Development, because then when Shoney and I go back...
It's infill development.
Yeah, it's infill, yeah. Good. Is that all you have, Steve?
Yep.
Okay. Who wants to go next?
That was okay.
Dale?
Yeah, on the, we had discussions about, in our last goal session, of the following on with the planning board to follow through on those. And I think that's one where we're less than complete on where we stand with that in terms of zoning changes. We're talking about another planning board trying to need to work on 152. I'm, we've had a lot of conversations, we've made progress on that.
So continue work with planning board to address future zoning changes.
Right, because that's still, you know, as we talk about taking on other development-related projects, we still have other parts of that, so... And one of the things that we've talked about that we don't have in our toolbox yet is an updated presentation that captures a lot of the positive things that are happening in New Market. And I, I had envisioned that as a, that presentation that's part of this. I had envisioned that as being, you know, like a powerpoint that somebody could present to somebody, but one of the things Val showed me was actually a town, and I'll send it to a town in Scotland where you can see how it could be used here, where you capture a lot of individuals, you talk about the, you know...
We need a marketing plan.
All of that would make any of the other economic development type things would be better.
Just to let you know about the planning, our former government, the council approves zoning ordinances, zoning...
Oh, sorry, my bad, yeah, I should have known, yeah.
Yeah, so, just so, most, for you guys, most traditional towns, it goes to the voters. But our form, it's the council does it.
And I also had, I guess we're doing everything we got, but I also had the facilities plan and, you know, coming up with something that's sustainable. In other words, it would keep the facilities and good working hours, but it would also be, you know, year by year. And I, and I still think we need, I know we've, I'm hoping that, that somewhere in there, that maybe that's, when we see the road plans, I, I've just been struck by, you know, how the road I'm on is going to go, have gone through such a number of years where the people pick up the pavement pile by the side of the road and create little pyramids they get picked up. So I'm, I'm hoping that when we complete catching up, that we are able to sort of figure out what's sustainable in terms of what would keep the road so bad.
So I heard facility plans, then I heard a road plan. Is that?
We have a road plan.
Okay, you have a road plan.
It's just the road plan's not funded as well.
Yeah, so I'll put continued funding of the road plan.
Right. Because at the end of it, of the process, I think for both of these, we want to understand how do we keep our facilities at an adequate state? What, what will that cost? And hopefully the fund will be able to do that. Those are kind of foundational to our budgets moving forward.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Tony?
Um, so I had a, a big goal that a lot of, I put a lot of things into it.
Okay.
And that's economic development.
Okay.
I think is my overarching goal. And, and so, one of the things, you know, is working on the, the development of the north and south 108. I put parking in there because I think that that's a piece of our development. Marketing our properties, the properties that we own as well as other properties that might be available that we don't own. So that kind of goes in with that infill. And then really focusing on our relationships with the local businesses and the, you know, the New Market Business Association. So I think it's all sort of, for me, it's all encompassing with economic development.
You said local businesses and is that the?
The New Market Business Association.
Okay.
Yeah, which is, yeah, our local businesses.
You call it the NBA, is that the acronym for it?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Um, so that was one. And then I, you know, I, I don't know if I would call it, or what I would call it, whether it's a facilities plan or really continuing to work on our CIP, because I think that they kind of go hand in hand. So, you know, I look at our roadway plan, and I would love to see a facilities plan that mirrored that, you know, where we set, we were on a schedule. We replace the carpets, you know, in year two, and then again in year twenty-two or whatever. So I would love to see some, and a way for us to, to again balance those costs, because as we're looking, and we have a facilities director, it's probably one of the drawbacks of hiring facilities directors, that we've suddenly shown the spotlight on, on the needs of our community. So understanding what those needs are, which I think we're on our way to understanding them, but then figuring out how to address it.
Sure.
Yeah, they come with a large price tag most of the time.
Yeah.
Yep. Also, you said facility plan that maybe coordinates with the CIP a little bit?
Exactly.
Okay.
Which it does, but better coordinates, I should say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, can I, a little bit, I think, I think we have, we talked about this a little bit when we had our budget workshop, we have a five-year plan, but that, in some cases, I think that could be utilized more effectively as a tool in terms of where you see, you know, where you see that perhaps some capital reserve funds are funded okay for a couple of years and later then continuing to fund them each year. Take that money, put it on the five-year plan, that there's going to be a two-year hiatus on that plan, and the third year it kicks back in, because that's when the money is needed in that fund. And add extra money to another fund. And use that five-year plan so that you can sort of plan out contributions to fund cap and out of CIP and not have it be the same every year.
We have about three million in capital reserve funds, and the reserve funds were very broad. They weren't for specific projects. It was, we continued to just put money in the buildings fund.
Okay.
And so, and to be quite honest, when I have a project and I come in to withdraw the money from the council, I have a hard time getting it from the council because, well, where's the plan? Well, there was no plan when they put the money in, they just said, put the money in.
Yeah.
So now it's sort of, I have to backwards engineer and say, okay, I've got X amount of money, this is what I'm going to do with it.
Get the producer plan to go with it.
Right.
Where that, where we have seen that, you know, where something was earmarked, you know, or I saw that it was in the CIP and then in the budget and was planned for, it was much easier to say yes.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand. But, but my problem is I have cash that wasn't planned.
Wasn't earmarked, yeah.
Well, it's interesting, we have an interesting process in that it's really more of a wish list than it is, I think, a true CIP plan or, or facilities maintenance plan, or, you know, like I think...
Right, because if it was a true CIP plan, we'd be issuing debt every year. You'd be saying, look, we have two million dollars worth of projects, we need a bond, and then we retire a bond, you issue more debt, and you always have a constant debt. That's what Portsmouth Dover, the cities do. Versus towns tend to just say, okay, we need to redo the building in year ten. I'm going to put fifty thousand dollars in for the next twenty years. And then finally, nobody remembers what we're doing it for.
So then also priorities shift, too.
And that's it, you're right.
And you don't keep the focus on where you're trying to go.
Right.
Yeah. Did you have a third goal?
Yeah, my third is to focus on renewables and energy and, you know, considering solar for our community, you know, considering options, alternative energy options.
Great.
Thank you.
Christian, did you want to go next?
Yeah, I have a lot of overlap, so I'll just try to put a different, you know, slightly different spin.
Okay.
There is the, the whole CIP deferred maintenance of our public facilities.
Yeah.
And I think also just we're seeing some creative solutions for that, for funding, or, you know, or bundling things together at the right time.
Yeah.
So that's part of planning, right? And then just, you know, attacking the facility, deferred maintenance on facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, that needs, I think, needs to get addressed. And I, and I kind of bundle it with the energy savings piece, too, right? Because that's part of that innovation of bundling solutions together.
Alternative energy solutions, yeah.
So, um... And, yeah, I agree with, you know, longer, the longer term out that we can go, the better. You know, that really starts to set a pace, I think, a cadence for the future.
Well, some of the tax credits and rebates are still in play, and you never know, will they disappear?
Yeah.
And so you, lots of, lots of communities are trying to hop on them.
Yeah.
So I had parking, too, but I was, I went back to the, the visioning exercise to kind of see what the priorities were of people in 2015. And to kind of see, how did these things dovetail together with other things that they want? And I really, I noticed, and I'd like to flip the parking around a little bit, because I noticed that they're, they were very enthusiastic about pedestrian features, too. So I'd like to take the parking issue and maybe move the focus away from things that we're just getting stone, you know, hitting a brick wall on, like more parking spaces, and say, what are some other solutions other than more spaces? You know, the parking tickets, I think, is a flavor of that. Or focusing on other ways to, you know, like you were saying, pathways for downtown. I know, I went and looked at Durham's goals, and they have a program, I, what do they call it? Park once and walk. Which means, you know, maybe park a little further out and then walk everywhere, which ties in what you were saying about can more, if you have more connections, it might, you know... So these are just examples. Like, can we take the parking question, still stay focused on it, because I think everybody agrees it's an issue, an important one, but flip it, let's flip it around a little bit, instead of trying to still go for the same, same answer.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just fill in that, but we, we do it sometimes. That Bay Ridge Road block, which is hardly utilized, where we're resurfacing, is a terrific entry point. You know, you walk across the, the bridge over the river just below the falls, it's a lovely little walk and up into it, you know, there's, there's lots of those. And I know in past years, we said, well, people won't use it to park for the downtown, but I, I think if we publicize those a little bit, you know, I think, I think it enhances your experiences of the downtown. Just do it.
Yep. And my last one is, I noticed when I was reviewing the vision exercise results from 2015, that either we've accomplished a lot of the high priority ones, or we've, you know, got, we're starting to address them. So that's work in progress. So I was thinking, maybe now that those are, you know, we've used those for goals, would it be timely to do another one and get an update on that?
Okay.
And see how it could help us, you know, just as an annual goal to get that done again as a bench, new benchmark.
Okay. So the visioning session you're referring to from 2015, is that, was that part of your master?
That was part of the...
The master plan.
The master plan, okay.
Usually that's every five.
Is it every five years?
Five years, yeah.
Which is not very far away.
No. Okay. That's fine, we defer it for two years if it's on the schedule. That's what it says here.
Were those the results?
That was the results from, I, I don't know.
I wasn't on the council one.
Yeah, you were.
Was I?
Because it was my first.
So it's like this.
Yeah, you were.
So do you want to hold that as a goal for now?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
That's not a goal.
Okay.
I think the other, the other one I had was, is there, you know, can we start looking at ways maybe policy-wise or tax incentive-wise, or just, you know, the, the tools at our disposal to start promoting converting housing from rental to owned, to ownership if possible? You know, whatever opportunities we've got there.
Okay. Alright. It's a good one. So, policy to plan to convert.
Because that was another really high one on the vision exercise. So...
How would you address that out of curiosity? Are you looking at by taking what are currently built as single-family homes but rented out to multiple individuals?
There were some suggestions in that, that some approaches for it that we could, I assume that's going to be part of this, just like a little bit of how we're going to do it.
Who cares? I like the ideas.
Yeah, I'll share that with you.
Yeah, I mean, some of that's been done on a micro level, and the only one that comes to mind, and Steve might know more than myself, but I was in Berlin this morning, they were a community where, you know, they went from twenty-five thousand to nine thousand essentially overnight, and they had to do the same thing. So as, as much as financially hurt they were, they had to come up with a pool of dollars to start to buy some of those multi-unit buildings that were really ridden with issues. Buy them, tear them down for the most part, and then put them back on the market.
You're hearing Detroit's doing now. They basically ripped down neighborhoods.
Very, very similar.
Because they had an overs, oversupply of housing stock. I think what we would, our situation is different because as it almost goes to what Portsmouth, happened at Portsmouth naturally, apartments turned to condos.
I don't want to prescribe yet, I just wanted to say, you know, and propose that as maybe a goal, if there's a agreement on that. Maybe next year, I don't know. There's a lot of other good ones.
And a lot of those, well, I mean, some of those places where that's happening are units that are on the Exeter or something like that. And we, we require those as part of to keep the downtown characteristics. The last time we did zoning in that area was, they were required to not be all residentially, you know, like the unit that hasn't been built yet, but the one there where it looked like a railroad station down near the railroad tracks, and it's going, it had to have a commercial component on the first floor and residential. So, so those have been, there's been the expectation of that kind of, you know, redevelopment would happen, but people want, who set certain criteria around them.
Okay.
Good, good discussion. Thank you. Amy?
So I have developed the gateways also, I really like that one. But with that, I have kind of a couple of subbullets under it. That, that, but doing that would help attract the businesses that align, and we can make those align with the town. And then that in turn will also help with the tax rate. Or could. I'll wait till we get them right.
Sorry, thanks, yeah.
There, I have a lot of overlap, too, so I'll just... So the next one I have is being green, call it that. So that also has a couple of subbullets.
Got it.
So that would include the energy efficiencies.
Yeah.
The climate change planning. And even walkability would, I would see that falling under it. And that walkability was another thing that came up at that master plan meeting.
Great.
And the last one I do have is our facilities planning, much like, you know, I know we have some, but...
I'm finding a pattern.
Yeah, great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Casey?
I've definitely got some overlap, and I, I think, my thinking kind of changed in terms of phrasing, but a lot of similarities. But I'll go with, I'll go with a smaller one, because I think that we've got some pretty big ones that could be good, but I'll go with one that I think could be managed, and we might already actually be part of the way there. Talk, I talked to Steve earlier and kind of came up about going paperless or electronic. I think that's in the process.
Yeah, yeah.
But it might be nice to heavily focus on that, because I think that's something that can get knocked out within twelve to eighteen months, because I think a lot of these are going to roll over. So I think it might be nice and the benefit that I saw there with, with going paperless frees up space, it's cost efficient, it's environmentally friendly, so that might even bleed over into being green.
How narrow or wide were you thinking, like, just within, within the council, or?
It would be converting...
We're doing everything.
Everything.
Like the new financial software system, departments will be scanning bills and sending them up here instead of making copies and bringing them up. Council agendas are no longer going to be paper. We've got software, should be online by May.
Right.
That, it'll be a hundred percent digital.
And digitizing old documents.
Yeah.
Archiving ones that are of historical significance, but the, what was it, Londonderry that we talked?
No, um, Allenstown.
Allenstown.
It was Allenstown.
They did it, but it was, obviously, there's a, a little bit of an upfront cost, but within two or three years, they made that back almost three times. So cost savings, environmentally friendly, and probably free up some storage space, so.
Great.
But definitely smaller, but yeah, put that on there for sure.
Well, that's right into going green. Well, that's right into going green too, the previous, what we're seeing in energy solutions. It all ties together. So good.
And then, and, and kind of a similar thing, building. You said being green, but I just said kind of, uh, energy optimization, I guess, because I think, uh, you know, looking at alternatives would be great. So I think going more green would be great, but just, just how can we optimize our use of energy and output? Whether that even be, there's been discussions about like composting and stuff. I think that all factors in, but you know, depending on what we do. So just optimize what we, how we use things. Um, totally agree with facilities, but I'll put one else I have. I will just throw this on there to be, to be different. I like parking. I like a lot of other stuff that's come up. Uh, waterfront plan. I think that would be damn. I think that would be, that's, I mean, it's downtown. So I think, I think considering working that in to have some larger plan to save that because whatever happens to the waterfront happens to the town. So I think that's pretty significant.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Zachary?
Sure. Well, a lot of what I wrote has already been said. I was, so originally I wrote, uh, trying to incentivize non-restaurant based businesses to fill in the new areas that we're going to see open up on the north, northern portion of Main Street. But that kind of changed to, or that Steve used to market. I'd like to maybe develop a plan to help market new mar, new market for businesses. And one of the things that I see a lot is people saying, you know, oh, it's great. We can go down and we can get a bite to eat or we can get a drink or, but it's kind of it. We have a lot of food-based restaurants, but perhaps attracting, um, business owners that can provide more services right here in town instead of needing to go out to, you know, Portsmouth or Dover or Exeter for those, I think could be beneficial. I wanted to see, wasn't really sure how to, how to phrase this, but I, I put traffic study. I'd like to see how traffic enters on 108 from, uh, the southern portion of town on Exeter Road, especially in relation to the railroad crossing. As Dale had pointed out, it's just too congested. It, if I don't leave my house before 6:30, I can't make that left turn from Bennett Way onto Main Street. And if it's happening to me every day of the week, it makes me wonder how many other people are getting stuck. I think it'd be beneficial to, uh, work with the state and use, utilize our own resources to really study what's going on there and how we can, um, plan to address that as we move forward.
Okay. Steve, the, the planning commission has traffic counts, right?
Medium.
Yeah. Um, sorry, you, you said, uh, traffic plan for the north end of?
South, south.
South end, so, all right, okay. So that's 108 south, right?
Yeah.
I'm catching, I'm catching on, so.
And if you're looking for a third one, um, it was to examine our current housing supply and see if there's a way to incentivize, uh, development of single family homes and really, you know, put, put the ownership factor out there. So I'm just always renting. I don't like being a renter.
I definitely see walkability as a threat for all days, even with the economic development, being able to get from restaurant A to service B or whatever it may be. So I think walkability kind of comes up a lot.
You've seen a lot of it. Yeah, there's a great pattern.
And you can't walk and you can't park.
Right.
Yeah.
And I see facilities really going in with the, the environmental one.
Yep.
And anytime, now that we're facilities planned, they should be making sure that we're doing the environmental part of that as well.
Yeah. And, you know, really outside the facility plans, what we're talking about here tonight compared to two years ago, is really a lot of quality of life issues, which is, so just think about in two years, how far you've come as a community where, you know, we're talking about, you know, CIP stuff and unifying a plan and, and parking and relationships with the school and planning board stuff. And now all of a sudden, we're really talking about some other big, you know, real big picture quality of life issues for your community, traffic, green space, energy, all sorts of fun stuff that's up there. So anyone, anything before we take a quick, like five to seven minute break, if that's okay? Anyone, goal or anything you want to throw it out or? Okay.
One other thing that hasn't been mentioned.
Yep.
That has just kind of been percolating a little bit, and that's communication. Cause I think that, and I don't know exactly, I, I think there are a lot of facets to it. I think that as a, as a community, for the most part, we do a really good job. I think Steve has brought a lot in the last, you know, bunch of years, like with utilizing social media and, and a regular newsletter. And so there's a lot of digital information, um, but we've lost, and this isn't a, a town issue, but it's trying to figure out how to deal with it. We've lost the regular newspaper coverage. We just don't have it, as I'm sure lots of communities have, um, lots of smaller communities. You know, the focus is in Exeter, in Dover, in Portsmouth, and they, we don't have a reporter at our, at our meetings anymore. Sometimes that's good.
It's good and bad. I can give you mine for my community, yeah.
But I think that there's a, like, there's just a real disconnect for a lot of people. Where we have a lot of young people.
Yeah.
Somehow we need to figure it out. And I don't know what the answer is, but it's just.
What we're seeing for the newspaper is that when they purchase the other, their competitive newspaper, they're trying to figure out where they're, you know, what they're going to be.
Right.
Cause now, we used to have competing newspapers on the seacoast and now we have one big conglomerate. And the union leader doesn't know how to get out of Manchester than they used to.
Right.
And, um, so I think they're trying to figure it out as much as we're trying to get them to cover us, from my understanding.
And then when we tie that in with like the, we didn't have a candidate tonight, which again is not the town's responsibility, but, but it, but in some ways maybe it is and sort of, or maybe it's facilitating, maybe if we have better relationships with the business association. So facilitating that somehow, facilitating that communication somehow. I don't know exactly.
Something along the same lines, cause I, I got a sense that we have a lot of, um, a lot of people who volunteer in committees and do, you know, a lot of community work. There's a lot of volunteerism, but can, would it make sense to try and harness that energy and coordinate it? Or, you know, and that would include, that would, you know, improve communication too. Send people know what's, and we're small enough. I don't see why we couldn't, you know, do something like that.
It's probably the, the single greatest challenge any organization, any community, any school district faces, which is always communication. You can teach it, we can talk about it, but it's one of the hardest things, I think, any of us can practice on a daily basis. Are we communicating?
Going to everybody's house and telling them what's going on at the meeting.
Yeah, it's so difficult.
We're not gonna, we're always gonna hear, I didn't know about that.
Yeah.
So.
But are there ways to, to get out, to just, you know, further your reach? You know, that's really, I think your question is, okay, we're utilizing social media to a great extent, but is there anything more we can do? Because you, you used to have it all at once, social media plus the print, but now that the print's fallen off, you've lost a, a medium.
I was going to, I was going to say, I think the website is good. I still think there's an opportunity to take it to another level.
I think one of the things people don't realize though, the constraints that municipalities also have with communications, because we can't communicate, you see, hear about community forums.
Right.
We can't do a community forum because of, as a government entity, if you let one, you must let everyone. And people don't like it when you let everybody, when you say everyone, you mean everyone. Um, so I think that's one of my big, I, I, in, being in my seat, I get it all the time. Oh, can I put church announcements on the town website? No, I'm sorry. Oh, can I put this group's announcements on the website? No, I'm sorry, because if I let you, then I have to let this one and people may not like what this message is. So part of it also is what we can and can't do.
And some, sorry, but some of it might come down to the NBA. They play a role in some of that stuff too.
You're right. And that's what I, as you know, everyone knows, we've tried to get them.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe it falls under economic development in some ways.
In some ways.
You know, that marketing piece and press releases, you know, us being proactive in marketing, because it's a different kind of marketing, but it's still, you know, marketing the community through the press.
Yep. Good.
And the only thing I'd, I'd, are we stuck with the whoever hosts our website? I think it's a service, right?
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just updated it two, three years ago.
All right. Cause it is kind of clunky, I will say. It's hard to, depending on what device you're on, depending on what you click on, you might be pulled stuff from 2013. So I think that is, it's a concern.
Yeah. The way technology changes, it's amazing. And once you put it up, it could go obsolete. So, good.
Speaking of kicking it up to another level, um, you know, one thought I had around that is like, if we're promoting, uh, what have we got? Being green and energy efficient? Well, that, the town can set an example of how the towns run and what we do, but then we can also be promoting programs that citizens can take advantage of in their private arena, right?
Yeah.
And businesses too.
No.
No?
We can't advertise for businesses or.
No, not advertise.
Or tell private things.
So if there's a government rebate program.
We can do that.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, but we can't say, oh, this agent's, this group is doing X, Y, Z.
No, no, that's not what I meant. I just meant, we may not be able to pull in and promote things, certain things, but we can push things out in the other direction.
Like the energy committee is talking about hosting through New Hampshire Saves, button up the program. So.
That can go up there. Right, those are the kind of stuff.
Teaching, um, the community, you know, residential homeowners how to be more energy efficient.
I think there's something else. This is a good time to remind everyone also about what the organizational study that MRI found. We are very, run very, very, very lean. We don't have, they, everyone thought we were going to have the opposite effect when they looked at our organization, but they said, no, we're surprised that New Market's been running is lean. So a lot of these goals, we also have to, we, we're too lean. And so again, one of the things we need to consider also when setting goals is the realisticness of, okay, we can set the goal, who's going to do it? Cause again, I only have 24 hours in a day.
Right.
And.
We're just brainstorming right now.
And I don't work on it. And I don't, sometimes I do try to go home or not look at my phone or computer. But, um, yeah, that's something we also have to look at and be considerate of that when we come up with the goals that we're extremely lean. So.
That's realistic.
Right.
Big for a buck.
Okay. So we'll take 10 minutes? Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I grab YouTube real quick.
Sure.
We're on, okay, great. So Steve's final comments I kinda, I took to heart in a sense that, okay, could I put five goals up there that are kinda lofty and they have a lot of subbullets and then all of a sudden I am overwhelming people. And so, what I wanna say is that, everything we've talked about today thus far, you know, what's going well, what needs a little bit of work, and then your individual goals, they're not going anywhere. They're gonna be in the cumulative report that Shelley and I are gonna draft together. So, when I turn the easel around, yeah, there's three goals, but if you accomplish them all, well then you move on to some other goals that you've come to agreement on as a council and administrator to say, okay, we've done this, what else can we get done while, in the next 18 months? So, I just wanna preface it like that. So, you know, we've often said, oh, I don't know if my goals made it in there, but we tried to give some subbullets. And so, what I also wanna do is, yeah, put some goals up there, but we need to talk about, like Steve said, who's gonna accomplish them? Who's gonna help drive that? And then, when do you want report backs? When do you want deliverables? When do you want, you know, what do those dates look like when you need them? In general, you need them around budget season. Cause a lot of times, especially when it comes to facility plans, oh, that has to do with money, right? And, you know, you need to have that in a reasonable amount of time so you can make some of those decisions. So, again, my handwriting, I rent like a four-year-old. All the help in the world, it never got me better. So, number one, it was pretty evident, facilities plan that coordinates with CIP, and I expect some of the green, I like the word optimization right in there at the same time, which is, you know, from here on out, as you start to look at your buildings, whether it's rehab, or renovation, or anything new, that you're taking into consideration all the energy options and solutions that are possible, right? Would you agree with that? That's, I think that's pretty evident and clear here tonight, that as you move forward, are there more efficient boilers? Is there a solar option out there to make those things happen? Does it make sense to, you go up north and they got wood pellet boilers everywhere. I mean, there's just all sorts of options out there to do some things like that. So, a facilities plan, and so, Steve, can you explain more, so you have a facilities director?
We do.
Okay. Is that, it's no longer shared with the school?
It is.
It is, okay, so it's still shared?
Yep.
And does that person have the bandwidth to produce a plan like that, or do you need outside consultants?
No, they do, and it's, the plan itself is coming up shortly.
Okay.
But as soon as the, let me rephrase that, the examination of all our facilities and what needs to be done. Inventory is being done. After that, the plan will have to come up and say in year one, we're gonna do X, Y, Z, and year two.
Okay. So when would that paper plan might be available?
The summary, the inventory?
Yeah.
Inventory should be done by the end of the month.
Okay.
The-
That's the energy audit, right?
Not the energy audit.
Okay, that's different.
Energy audit's different. We're also doing performance contracting right now.
Perfect.
So we're doing an energy audit at the same time.
Great.
He's doing an inventory of everything that needs to get done.
He's doing a facilities, and he's prioritizing that inventory, or is he just laying out?
Just laying out right now. He's gonna say in police station, X, Y, Z needs to be done, town hall, we need to do this one. Next step will be to prioritize it.
Well, and it's more, I mean, I think the inventory here is, this is what you've got.
Right. This is, and what's wrong.
Not in good taste.
Right. An assessment along with the inventory.
All right, so I have inventory, Steve, by five, one, is that reasonable? Or does he wanna go six, one?
Let's go six, one.
Six, one.
Got some high school project kicking off soon, so I'm giving it some time.
Prioritization by October 1st?
Oh.
Or well before that?
I'd say September, cause I need to include in my budget.
Okay.
And I have to, by law, I have to present the budget by October 15th.
Okay. So you get your, you'll see the inventory of what you own, what the facilities are, all that fun stuff, all the pertinent information goes along with it, the age, the shade, by June 1st, and you'll get a priority from Steve and the facility director by September 1st, which he, well in advance of the budget that needs to be up by October 15th, is that what's in the charter? Okay. Are you comfortable with that? Again, we're gonna type this report up and we're gonna give it to you and you can make changes and send it back to us if you don't, when you leave here tonight. Ah, I wanna tweak this a little bit. So nothing is concrete as of right now when we leave here tonight.
So, that ties, I'm hearing it's gonna tie to the budget, but then how does it tie to the CIP?
CIP has to be presented to me by October 1st, it's around the same time.
Uh-huh.
So, we'll coordinate it with it.
Yeah, cause I mean, the overall goal is to coordinate with the CIP.
Yeah, I think Steve gets that, that's his bailiwick.
Right.
We're talking mechanics and dates though, so that's my question.
Yeah, and it has to be, right, they have to present one to me by October. So I have like two weeks included in my budget, but yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna put Steve's CIP, and this can change because it's fluid, I'll just put 10, one, that you're gonna get the CIP report by that point. So who puts the CIP together for New Market?
We have a committee.
A committee?
Yeah.
Comprised of the, out of the charter or out of the-
Charter.
Okay. Is that helpful, Gretchen?
Yes.
Okay. That's, first, and this is, this will be completed by the facility director along with assistance from Steve. Is that okay with everyone?
Uh-huh.
Good? Good progress? Goal number two, this is where it gets a little different, and I'm not sure what you have, the staff, or do you have, you have an EDC director?
No.
Okay. Do you have a planner?
We have a community development director, which is the planner, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So it plays a role in some of that fun stuff. In other communities, they dish this off to the EDC person, but you don't have it.
Right.
Economic development, I think, start to begin looking at what it looks like to develop the gateways. That was very evident from everyone tonight, you know, 108 North and South and Exeter Road, you know, you have an incredibly beautiful downtown. How do you start to take off from either end? It's, you know, for someone who doesn't come down here very often, and last year I came in the, two years ago I came in the dark in the rain, I couldn't see anything. I was very impressed tonight driving through your downtown. It was, it was tight, it was busy, it was vibrant, and it was beautiful. So, how do you continue to build off that momentum is the larger question. Continued development there. What I heard also, with Shelley and Nicole and I heard, was the marketing plan. Nicole and Steve talked about infill, and Zachary, you brought it up, and I think a couple others brought it up to say, okay, how do we better market?
I wouldn't link it so closely to infill, cause I think they're really-
Yeah, cause I would almost say, like, when I think in infill is that we, when expanding the downtown, you have to start looking up the hill as well.
Okay.
So.
We can, I'll scratch that for now.
Yeah.
Marketing plan, how do you best just get to the point where New Market isn't a pass-through community, it is a destination? And so how do you put a marketing plan together? And I, what I've seen is countless communities come up with some sort of plan at this point, trying to figure out, do they work with their regional planning commission to get that done? Is your community development coordinator, take the lead on that and try and work with outside consultant resources to accomplish that? That's a hard task to accomplish in-house, I would think.
Wasn't UNH, wasn't there some?
Yeah, we were applying for a grant, UNH, for their master's program to do it for us, but we haven't heard anything.
You haven't heard?
No. No, that's what I'm-
Continued commercial growth, which is ongoing, and I just put in there from my own recollection to, you know, have New Market become a destination, that people want to come, you know, family, more than just maybe a restaurant, there's other services here that they can get. Even not only for your away visitors, but for the folks that live here. Like, they don't have to go to Dover, Portsmouth, or Exeter to get what they need, they can get it right here in their own community.
We have an economic development committee that was pretty active two or three years ago, and then they kinda came up with a series of recommendations for the planning board to do, and, so it's, they've been on hiatus for a while waiting for that. Is, is there a need for them to give, would they be helpful to you have that?
The issue with an economic development committee with the actual carrying out of economic development is the old, what's the thing? If you build, if you try to build a horse by committee, it turns into something completely different, whatever that old adage is. This is like hiring a marketing firm to start developing products that we can hand out and getting information out. So a committee, I think, would almost somewhat, sometimes get in the way. So I think it's, it's most, we gotta streamline at this point.
I never push a committee on anybody, cause they can, they can take different paths. So if you wanna form a committee, that's great, but that would be your job.
And I'm fine with that, as far, especially as far as the marketing side, you do not need a committee.
Right.
At some point, you might wanna build consensus around certain things.
And that would, the committee I'd come to is the council.
So, these two right here, Steve, I'll rely on you when it comes to gateway development and marketing plan, where does that live within your organizational?
Honestly, I think gateway development's a new idea.
Yeah.
I think we haven't really been pushing it as much. I think what we need to do is, at that joint meeting with the planning board, say that's our, one of the council's priorities, is we wanna see the gateways developed.
Okay.
To our knowledge, it doesn't require zoning change.
No. That's what we, that's what we have to find out, is, you know, what, what can we do? We knew there was an issue with utilities, and those are being upgraded as we speak to North Main, and Exeter Road is already done, so.
So when do you think that joint meeting might happen?
June.
June. By the end of June?
Oh, yeah, mid-June.
Okay. I just wanna put a date on it.
No, no later than mid-June.
Okay, so six fifteen, somewhere around there?
We don't have a date though, right?
No. No, getting all these joint meetings set up, and I'm trying to make sure you guys have, we want a joint meeting every week, it sounds like, so I don't wanna make sure you guys are overwhelmed either.
And so at that meeting, you start to talk to the planning board about, you know, what development looks like.
What do we need to do, yeah.
What you need to do, and come together to help focus that, prioritize, and you may not need zoning changes at this time, but further dive in just to make sure you don't need any.
Right.
There's always that hiccup sometimes.
I just wanted to, will that have clarity on the underlying objectives or goals? Which I think is, talks to quality of life, you know, and I know.
That, you go to planning board and say, okay, that's their bailiwick.
Okay.
Is the, what kind of development's the right thing, and then they come back to the council and say, this is what we believe, and the council ultimately approves and ordinants.
And there's economic development, but what are we doing it for? Like, what are we trying to achieve by doing that, I guess is what I'm losing sight of.
Well, I think you're trying to achieve is the continued growth from what you have here, so it's more consistent, spreads down 108 at either end.
But here's the deal, we pointed out that 108 is very congested. So I'm like, are we looking to draw more people to, through the corridor?
You gotta understand, we can't have it both ways.
I know.
You can't have, okay, if we don't allow, we don't do this, then we, then other businesses start to die.
So I'm talking maybe about balance and keeping some kind of balance in sight, because, or are we talking about trying to draw people off of 108 and stay a little?
Yeah, that's, I think that's it, yeah.
Okay.
One of the biggest misconceptions with any downtown development is traffic is bad. Traffic is good in downtown.
Yes.
Because you stop and you look at what's going on.
If you can get people to stop.
Well, and that's, that's what, but that's what we're trying to do, is if you do things and you have more development, traffic will slow people down. That's why, that's why you're seeing all these cities getting rid of their one-way traffic in downtowns. It's because they're not slowing down. You want them to slow down and kinda get stuck. And also, hate to say it this way, if there is a traffic issue, then it won't be used as a cut-through to get to Exeter. People will be using 195 to get to Exeter, or they'll be using the Spalding to get to 95 to Exeter, or 125, which is a better road than what we have.
I'm okay now, I just wanted some clarity on that, you know, like what-
It's, we-
Are we trying to improve the tax base, or are we trying to do this?
Improve tax rates, quality of life by offering more services to the residents, improving the vision of people when they do come into New Market, what it looks like.
Yeah, cause we have deliverables, but when I look at things, it's like, you know, what are the goals though, right?
I am gonna extend upon it in the report, but for tonight's sake, you know, I was gonna say, you know, obviously continued commercial growth and market plan, it all comes down to, like I said, balancing the tax rate, increasing revenue for the community.
Cause how else are you gonna measure your success? Whether you've done what you wanted to do, if you don't know what you're doing it for.
Well, I think that's, that's the point. We're, we're at the point where we're taking a, we're starting to move the ship. And the ship for the longest time was just focus on downtown and redevelop the downtown. Well, now it's to focus on expanding to the north and the south. And to move a ship, it doesn't take, can't do it like a car, you gotta do it slowly, and you gotta get everything on board. So I think that's what it is, and you're right, we gotta figure out the quality of life factors of what do we want it to look like? And, I mean, we're gonna be, there's gonna be sidewalks to the end, to both orders, so, I mean, because we already have it going up to Durham, and if we ever get the bike path in, I mean, there's already discussion in the past that that's a necessity to improve it the other way. But we already have sidewalks for most of Exeter Road. So we have the pedestrians in there, we have, we're doing the utilities, so now we gotta figure out, okay, those things are there, now what do we do?
I've had, well, I've had conversations with two people in the last week about small businesses, people looking for space, and it doesn't exist in New Market. So-
Near downtown?
Near downtown.
Or service providers outside?
One would wanna be near downtown, one would need their own parking. So it'd be a different sort of a, of a need, but, but so, so there is, you know, in both small businesses, you know, not, not talking about like bringing in Walmart to, you know, to the corridor or anything like that.
Like office spaces?
Right, and that's what you're seeing a lot of the development are. Yeah. You're seeing a lot of developments in communities, they're smaller, either plazas or mixed use. They have the offices on the bottom level and renters are above, and sometimes a rental above aren't retail, they're not housing, but they're offices.
Yes.
You'll have the retail on the bottom and offices on top. I think those are the things that-
And that's what people want too, is the mixed use.
Right.
That's the highest rated thing that they want, right?
Tony, do you mind if I ask, were those folks looking at structures that were already in existence, or were they looking for, to develop areas and they just weren't able to find anything?
Probably more things that are in existence.
Okay.
That either is in a position to, they could rehab something, but not necessarily- They're either in a position to, they could rehab something, but not necessarily...
They want some of the turnkey, and that's what a lot of people, some people are developing those now. I mean, if you go to Dover, most corners there now are being redeveloped in those kind of buildings.
So Steve, you said you applied for a grant at UNH for some sort of marketing plan?
Yeah. Didn't come, we haven't heard from them. You're right, I think it's, we've got to move on on our own.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you want the deliverable to look like there?
Problem there is I have no money to do it.
Okay.
The budget didn't have it. So it would almost have to be included in the next budget.
Okay, well, that's, that's reasonable, that's, it is what it is. In the meantime, if a grant...
I can send out RFPs, I can find out what it's going to cost me, and then put it in there, but...
Yeah.
When you say, so when is the earliest you could have money to spend?
Fiscal year twenty.
So we're talking two years away?
No, fiscal year nineteen starts on July one.
So a year from now?
Yeah.
You could have all the planning to spend money.
Right, yeah.
So you plan on doing an RFP in twenty eighteen to find out what it costs?
Fiscal, we're fiscal year, so fiscal year nineteen.
Fiscal year nineteen.
Eighteen's almost over for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so fiscal year nineteen, you'll do an RFP?
Correct.
Okay.
So we can still move forward?
We can move forward, we just can't do it, unless I can find the funds.
So this is in two years?
Oh, it's a much longer project. This isn't, see, I think that's one thing too, is understand it's not a, these things aren't three months down the road.
I meant to get it rolling?
Yeah.
To actually get some traction.
It's going to be, because I can't get an RFP and say, oh yeah, by the way, we're not going to do this for another ten months.
Do you have some sense of what it might cost?
I would say between ten and thirty thousand dollars.
I would say that's fair.
Yeah, to do it right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's from, everything from rebranding the town to producing marketing materials to...
We got a price from Buxton and ICNA?
Yeah.
And they wanted sixty grand.
Right.
And it was very, very intense, and it was very involved. It probably could have been scaled down, but Buxton, which is a big national company, if you search them up, they wanted sixty thousand dollars to put that plan in place.
What does something like that typically entail for the town itself? Like, how do they go through the town, I guess, and then assemble something?
I guess I'm not...
So we say, hey, build a marketing plan for us. How does it typically work?
They probably do focus groups in town, they'll find, they'll highlight our positives and negatives, they'll come in, see what we already have.
Okay.
Odds are, they'll look at like the town website, they'll look at our logos, you know, because currently the only logo we have is the town seal.
Yeah.
Just really a whole complete rebranding.
Okay.
They meet with business owners, they meet with citizens, they meet with government, you know, town employees.
Yeah.
And then they combine it into one big nice plan.
Yeah.
But it's not cheap.
And then, right, and then carry it out to the next town.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so that gives you, in economic development, you have two deliverables, one the joint meeting with the planning board, and second, Steve will prepare an RFP going into fiscal year, the end of sort of nineteen, to get some numbers to see what you might be able to get in the budget for fiscal year twenty. Makes sense? It's not a goal that's going to happen next month, but it's, it's a good goal to work towards because monies do become available, and Steve might be able to pull a rabbit out of the hat and get a grant for some of it, or at least get it started, so...
One, one thing I'll just throw out now, because I think it's the time now, and I, from the planning board two years ago, and it was one thing that Rosie, bless her heart, it's not on there anymore, but, you know, really wanted design standards and stuff like that. And I think if you were really going to develop, you want to, so to understand what your design is, what the look of that development is going to be. Because if you, if you have the expectations about it, and if we're still early, then that's, that's a question.
There was a committee of the planning board at one time talking about that, that Rosie was a part of.
Right. That shouldn't die.
No.
That's another topic for a joint meeting.
Yeah, I can bring it right up.
Yes.
And so the last goal, number three, we kind of tied all into one, which is...
Can I add one thing, for the continued commercial growth? And my suggestion is that I explore hiring an economic development director, even on a part-time basis.
Okay.
For, is this twenty twenty-two?
This would be nineteen, fiscal year nineteen, twenty. Yeah, unless I can find the funds again to do it, but...
For twenty?
I, I, I'm, yeah, because I'm finding, the last couple of years, the goal of the council is economic development, but we have so many different staff people and so many different committees and boards doing everything, we need to get somebody to focus it and get the marketing out there, of just saying, look, this is what we have. And, you know, I, I don't have, again, I can only do so much, and I need somebody who's an expert in it more than me.
Well, and I'll put it out there, in your region, you're most, you're outnumbered. One of the communities around you have somebody in that role, so they're one step ahead of you when it comes time to talking to that certain business or, or working with the planning board to explore, they come back to you, but zoning changes and stuff like that. Exeter has one, Portsmouth has one, Dover has one, Somersworth just got...
Yeah. Durham has one.
Durham has one. So, you know, as much as you don't want to play into the competition, it's a reality, it's there. And so sometimes it's every person for themselves.
Well, if we had a full-time, say, a full-time economic development director, would they be able to, or would they necessarily have the expertise to produce a marketing plan?
Hmm, no.
Not really.
Yeah. They would probably come in and say, I need money to get a consultant.
You'd probably... They'd be able to keep it updated.
Right, right, updated, but we're so far behind you, somebody to start it off.
Someone has to build the foundation.
Right.
Person.
Yeah. Good, thank you, Steve, good.
Yeah.
Okay. And lastly, like I said, outdoor quality of life, and I can always work on the phrase if you don't like it, but we try to put everything into one, and that is, you know, waterfront plan, parks and green space, you know, making Newmarket a more walkable community, still focusing on parking. I, I like the discussion tonight on Gretchen, what you said, it's sort of, I like how you flipped the parking issue where, you know, park once, walk more often, I think is what Durham used. Save that here for future sessions. And then bike lanes, it really ties into blockability and pedestrian, really pedestrian-friendly stuff. And so as you start to rehabilitate roads, and if that's even an option in the future, as, you know, as funding becomes available, do you take a holistic look at, okay, is the, is the road walkable? Is the, does the road have a bike lane? You know, do they need this? Do they need a sidewalk at that point? So that, that's where that sort of real finite detail of planning comes into play as you work with your community development director, the potential economic development director down the road, the administrator on, you know, how do we tie this stuff into when we do this? This all, in my mind, this all here is a huge, it weaves in and out of both these previous two goals. If we stuck them in there, I think they would get lost because they're, they're very important quality of life issues that you discussed here tonight, that I don't want to see get lost on, which is, I find important. Push back if you don't agree.
Well, I, I just say that the word that comes to mind too, just for all that's usability, the idea that bike lanes is about how you can actually use the town, parking's about how you can use the town, walkability, green, having parks instead of just open space is about usability.
Yeah.
And the waterfront plan is just saving space to use for that, so, yeah, just usability in general.
I, I look at it a little, a little different. One is, you know, the usability, and the other is the features that you're attracted to, and how, how can you use them, you know, how can you get to them or access them? So green spaces, you know, the waterfront, I'd even, you know, we can probably come up with some other ones. One I thought about was like, like farmer's market or farm stand, you know, that would bring in the agricultural rural part into downtown, something like that. Just kind of explain the difference between the two to me, so...
And I'm kind of reluctant to put a deliverable data on this, because I think what it comes to from a council standpoint is, what I just said before is, okay, we're going to redo a road. Steve, should we put a bike lane in? Should we put a sidewalk in? Okay, Steve says, look, we've got X amount of processed land we should sell that we did it years ago. Could one of these be a park? Could one of these be used for a farm stand? You know, it's much easier to convert tax-related property to public use than it is to sell it quickly half the time. So, you know, things like that. So I think these really fall into the lap of, to be honest with you, I'm not trying to put work on yourselves, but falls in the lap of you all that says, okay, as we navigate these waters together and do projects, are we taking these important quality of life issues into consideration when we make decisions? So I'm reluctant to put, okay, we're going to have this done in three months. I just think this is ongoing, and it needs to be on the front burner as you all make decisions in the budget process, when grants are awarded, and when you put facility plans together, whether you fund road plans, those all weave back to this. Would you agree?
Yeah, it's a mindset.
Okay, it really is. That's what I was, I'm like, well, as we were sitting, I'm like, well, how do we put a data on this? I'm not sure you can. It has to, it has to be a team effort on, this stuff's important to us.
Some of, some of that is going to be ways to either improve our webpage or adding more features on there. Because I'm thinking, you know, you think of a water, we've got to do waterfront park. That must be, is that coming online, the one?
Shabbat?
Yeah, Shabbat.
Sometimes it's sheer.
Yeah.
That, that must be close to it.
Yeah.
Pretty close, it should be, yeah, it should be in the near future.
You know, like this spring, I mean, summer, or something like that. So we, there's, is a fair amount of, you know, and we've, we still got access to Heron Point.
Right, well, I mean, I would say that that goes, again, with our marketing, because we don't market our conservation. We have miles of trails in Newmarket, and that is, we, we don't do a great job, I don't think, of letting people know, even people who live within the community know that those things are there, never mind outside of the community. So, I mean, I think that that goes...
There are many people that think when you put in conservation that you're not allowed to have access to it.
Right.
And it's the exact opposite. You're supposed to be able to have access to it.
The ultimate to it.
Right.
So some of those are a matter of, I mean, I thought if one from UNH was going to help us with it, or somebody was going to help us, did trail maps up online? We don't have those still.
Right, yeah, and...
It was talked about at one time.
I think Conservation Commission was looking at that, because it's their...
Yeah.
It's their bailiwick.
I mean, a lot of this is, when we talk about, when you brought it back to the people sitting at the table, and a lot of this does come back to something that is also put in the charter, which is coordination between the council and the other committees, and kind of encouraging. And I think we've done a good job of, we've been having joint meetings, whether we can still grow in the area of trying to encourage the deliverables from other committees, saying, you know, where is that?